The Governor of the State of Lenni has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak, and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the February 16, 2023 village board meeting, village board and committee of the whole meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the February 16, 2023 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Chowdhury M. Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated February 16, 2023.
Hold on one second. Just to check, trustee Pojek, you can hear us? Trustee Pojek?
How about Mike?
Trustee Light?
Can you hear?
We can hear you, Chester. Trustee Light? Trustee Light, can you hear us? When you do hear us, please let us know. Go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you.
I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, February 16, 2023, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes, here.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now move to community announcements. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you. Before we get into the community announcements, I'd just like to mention the tragedy that happened in the Middle East with the earthquake, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to remember these people and hope for their recovery, and it's a sad situation, but can we have a moment of silence, please? The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, March 4th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, has seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. And if you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our trustee Siddiqui, please.
The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to share your thoughts about biking and walking in Glendale Heights. We are proud to work with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning to receive input from residents on Thursday, March 16, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. in the Floyd Brown Village in Glendale, in the village hall. It is important that our communities have streets that are safe, comfortable, and accessible for all users. Bicycling and walking have economic, environmental, social, health, and health benefits, plus they can be fun ways to travel. By making our streets friendly for people walking and biking, our community members will have safer and more comfortable opportunities to bike and walk to school, work, parks, community centers, local businesses, and to family and friends in Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Assistant Village Engineer James Patton at james underscore Patton at glendalehighs.org.
Ms. Jess.
Thank you. The village of Glendale Heights has launched a new online records request system. The system powered by GovQA provides an efficient process for managing requests from residents and the media for public records in accordance with the Illinois Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. It also reduces paperwork and allows residents to track their requests online. For more information or to submit a request online, please visit the village's transparency page on our website at www.glandalehighs.org or call 630-260-6000. In observance of President's Day, all village offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th. If you have any questions, please contact the village during regular business hours at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Meritato, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Register today for the Mother-Son Dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best moves at our Candyland themed dance. Enjoy activities for evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 24th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Heights Golf Club. Please register by February 19th. The registration fee is $65 for residents, $75 for non-residents, and $30 for each additional child. Please note, the Daddy-Daughter Dance scheduled for Saturday, February 25th, is sold out. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Register by March 6th for the 2023 Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball Season. We offer variety of programs for youths between 5 and 14, ranging from T-ball to pony leagues. Team practices begin in early April through June, with a postseason tournament in July. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060, or visit www.GHREC.org. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines, and here's the guidelines. Age 65 or better, honor before December 31st, 2022, or have a spouse who is age 65. Lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2022 as either an owner or renter, have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2022, and have utility bill and paid in their name. Applications are being accepted now through April the 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050, or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. We now go on to public discussions of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? None. You have the consent agenda before you. Word Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2023. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes, February 2nd, 2023. Three, approval of the council payable listing of February 16th, 2023, in the amount of $1,542,563.99. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Sixth Amendment to the Banking Services Contract between Fifth Third Bank, N.A., and the village of Glendale Heights. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a settlement agreement between Commonwealth Edison Company, the village of Glendale Heights, and Azovar Audit Solutions Incorporated. Six, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award for the purchase of a virtualization cluster for the village of Glendale Heights VMware-based data center. Seven, motion to approve pay request number two to Unique Plumbing Company for the Lincoln Animal Storm Reservoir Replacement Project, total amount not to exceed $91,964.75. Eight is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schroder?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Non-rule call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek? Trustee Pojek? Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two to three. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two to three? Trustee Schroder?
Sound moved.
And Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Non-rule call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two, two, three is approved. Number two, an ordinance to waive, wait, and accept the proposal of Schroder and Schroder Inc. for the 2023 sidewalk removal and replacement program, and authorize the execution of a contract by and between Schroder and Schroder Inc. and the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-11. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-11? Trustee Schroder?
Sound moved.
Second, Trustee Meritato. Discussion. Non-rule call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-11 is approved. Number three, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement between, by and between Herman C. Camps Inc., D. B. A. Collies Delicious Donut, and the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading, ordinance Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-12? Trustee Schroder?
Sound moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. Non-rule call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-12 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? None. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Trustee Schroder?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Trustee Schmidt's role, uh, Trustee Pojek, second. Rule call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Meritato, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, February 16th, 2023, to order. Clerk, can you note who's present?
Noted.
Is there any additions or deletions? Bill?
Yeah, I would like to read a statement. Second, a discussion of a welcome booklet.
What was that, Bill?
A welcome booklet. And third, weather info on Glendale Heights media.
Okay, I got, I got one, two. The road program.
Road program?
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Can you raise your hand and come forward? Your name?
Mr. Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. First of all, Pat, I want to congratulate you on your behavior last time at the meeting. You acted very professionally, so I just want to make that aware. First question I have is, where is our study from Northern Illinois University? It's been gone, I think, at least a few months ago, and we haven't seen it yet.
So, it'll be up on the website tomorrow, if not Monday, as far as the survey goes.
Okay.
We met with NIU early in the week to go over goals that, as they were set by the elected officials. We worked through all those goals, and we're working on implementing those goals into the budget process coming up. I talked with the mayor early in the week about releasing the survey. David's been off for a couple days, so tomorrow we'll get with David and we'll get the survey posted on the website.
Okay, thank you. Finally, the $100,000 White Elephant Smoking Room has been shut down thanks to the county. They came in here and found that $100,000 that five of the six trustees approved being built, which was illegal at the time, and it has been removed by the Department of Health with the county.
Can I correct you? I don't mean to argue. It was not shut down. The, the mayor has asked that nobody smoke there because the mayor's office is next door. The Health Department, just for the record, the Health Department said that smoking can only take place because it does vent outside 15 feet away from the doors.
Is there signage up in there like there's supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to see it. And make sure that there's no smoking instruments or anything, but we paid $100,000 for somebody to smoke outside, okay. That's, that's a lovely spending, spending of money. You know, we got people arguing here of a couple thousand, you know, less than $1,000 of stipends and things like that. I hope I'm not limited on time since a person that was up here in the last two meetings utilized 16 and 12 minutes during the meeting of the committee of the whole. So I just want to make that aware too, when it was supposed to be limited to five. Another thing, taping of any meeting. There was a discussion at the last, you were not there, Doug, meeting with the board and the mayor, stating that the meeting, there was a trustee stated that it couldn't be taped, which is far from the truth. And I don't appreciate my name being dragged through the mud and accused of things, of things that I did not do. I do still have it, and I will utilize it where I need to. And one other thing too, there was a few months back, somebody up there had stated that they had never gotten a ticket in the world before they got the handicap violation one, but they also forgot to mention that they had a failure to yield a traffic ticket before. So I just wanted to make sure that all the records are straight. I'm tired of lies being set up here, and I'm tired of my guy being bashed for 16 and 12 minutes at the last two meetings. Thank you.
I know how it feels, Chris, but, I mean, you bash a lot of people too, so, and, and what you get back, what you get back is the same thing, and you don't, you don't tend to like it, do you?
What?
Getting bashed.
What are you bashing?
Well, you don't, you don't like, you don't like it when somebody says something about you, right?
When, when somebody says, "I stole $37,000 worth of equipment from the baseball," that's a complete outside lie.
Okay, thank you.
We've never had $37,000 worth of equipment.
Okay, thank you. I was just...
So I will utilize that for me to defamation of character.
Okay, sure. Next?
I miss Mike Light. He does my intro for me. I don't have to give my name and address. I'd pull Wayne Avenue.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome, Michael. Well, Chris asked the first part. I was wondering about the study because something's been bugging me since the last meeting, and, you know, you raised the taxes 4.9%, which is roughly almost $400,000, and you're doing it again this year. And then at the last meeting, we haven't seen the resident study asking what the residents want or need, but you're talking about all these expensive items that you want to buy, like you have a blank checkbook and you're just going to write checks. The mayor, they said that you guys are talking about buying a $200,000, $250,000 dance stage, all these carpeting of the parks. I mean, these are big expensive items. You should drop our tax rate first. Why should we pay for extravagant items? If you don't need that money, then the tax rate should be reduced, back to what it was at a minimum. So, you know, it's, it's, that's a lot of money, and I'm not saying the village doesn't need those items. I know the old stage is in bad shape, but these are things that you could budget for that could be in '24 or '25. They're not things you need immediately, and if you have that much excess, you said you had nine months of monies for the reserves, and if I remember right, by law, we only need three or four months, so you're overfunded by double, yet you still haven't adjusted the tax rate back to what it was. So my comment is just that if you're going to buy extravagant items, you should consider at least reducing the tax rate back to what we were paying before and spend within your limits, because those are very expensive items. And I know we haven't seen the Jock Report, but it sounds like that's going to come substantially higher than you expected too. So it's a lot of money, and the tax rate hasn't been adjusted back to where it was, and it should be. That's my comment.
Can I respond? Can I respond to that, Chairman? Go ahead. Mr. Pope, I really appreciate, I have a lot of respect for you. We are renovating grounds for kids, you know. Our kids are our future. They are very important. These grounds have been neglected for years, and I don't want to waste any minute, you know, to fix it and bring our kids, you know, they can play, they can spend their time. It's a very healthy program, is very good for, for our kids, you know. We are not building smoking houses. We are not bringing, bringing any luxury item that is needed, you know. Gym is very important in the life of our kids.
You're...
Number one, number two, let, let me please.
Go ahead.
Raise tax, you know, we do not impose tax. Taxes imposed on property by assessors' office, you know. We get like about seven percent, you know...
You raised the village portion 4.9% two years ago.
Three years ago?
Two years ago.
No, I was not here two years ago, you know.
You did it in the May after you were elected.
So after that, yes, if we need, yes. Now, water bills are coming, you know, we are discussing, because water is, are going to, we are going to raise because there's some contamination of phosphorus in water of Mississippi River, but, you know, the thing is...
I didn't say, I didn't say anything about raising the water bills. That's just another additional tax you're going to be burdening us with. I'm talking about the 4.9% that equals $400,000, that if you have money to spend on luxury items, we should get our taxes reduced back to where they were. That's my point. You're talking about those fields? You are wrong, Mr. Mayor. I was on that committee for a long time. The field, we have the nicest parks in Glendale Heights. Glendale Heights has the nicest parks. They're in great shape. Now, maybe some of them need some reno, and maybe some things need to be upgraded. I don't disagree with that. All parks need improvements, but before you go in and buy a $250,000 dance stage, that's two-thirds of what you raised our taxes, just for one item, and we haven't seen what you're asking for. We haven't seen the resident study, so that's not even saying what else do the residents want or need. So reduce our taxes before you start spending, budget for those things. If I need something at my house and I can't afford it, I have to budget for it. I don't have the luxury of raising my taxes and going and spending more money that I don't have. So you took $400,000 from us, and now you're buying, in my opinion, frivolous things with them. If you need those, you should budget for them. If they're things that are want and need, that we need right away, that's different. But I don't think a dance stage and carpeting fields qualifies.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that the board will put that on the back burner. I mean, we're not going to buy it like now. I mean, I, I, I don't even want it in the budget, to be honest with you.
The comment from Doug was that Keith has been looking at him for the mayor, and that it would be something that would be addressed in next year's budget. That's the exact comment.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's not in the budget.
Okay, well...
So if we don't put it in the budget, it don't get, it doesn't get done.
Pat, I'm just making a point, that if you're going to raise our taxes 400 grand, give us our money back as the residents and budget for those items.
Right.
That's my point.
Right, so I mean, I'm sure that that's going to end up on a back burner somewhere.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of great things that we, I'm sure the village would love to have, but at what cost?
I mean, in the same token, we spent a lot of money in our parks. I mean, being the chairman of parks, we spent a lot of money in parks, in our parks. So they're not, they're not junk parks. I mean, our parks are, are nice.
That's my point to the mayor, though. He said that they have to be put there in disarray for the kids. They're not, I don't believe that.
I'm not going to sit here and argue with them, but our parks are in real good shape. If you drive, if anybody in the whole town drives around all our parks, they're going to find it all nice. We got new swings.
I take my grandson to three of the parks when it's nice out.
We got nice parks.
Every week, we have very nice parks.
So, okay, anything else?
No, that's just my point, is that, you know, if you raise, if you're going to give us our money back before you start buying the expensive items and reduce the tax rate back to what it was. Times are tough, things are expensive, fricking eggs cost $9 for a dozen now, you know. Give us our, give us our tax money back and then start buying extravagant items. That's my point.
All right, appreciate your comment, Ed. Next?
Hi there, Michael Anaveros, Glendale Heights. First, I want to thank the men and women from Public Works for doing outstanding job planning and salting our streets during these extreme conditions the last 24 hours. So kudos to all of you. I want to provide an update on the $6 million Bloomingdale Railroad Bridge Construction Project. With all due respect to the village board and to Mr. Doug Flint, I spoke in person with Thomas Hardy, Senior Civil Engineer for DuPage County Division of Transportation, to gain a better insight on the bridge reconstruction. The project, which was supposed to begin in May of this year, has been pushed back to the fall, reason being they are still in the design phase. No detailed plans have come forward as to a complete demolition of the bridge or stage half of the bridge for demolition and keep the other half to enable bidirectional traffic during the two-year timeframe. Of course, he will be in contact with Mr. Flint, as I asked him to. Sorry to step in on your toes, but I wanted a better understanding of what the project was all about because I was concerned about the impact, not just to businesses, but also to the consumer as well.
They cannot start any of the, any of those road bridge projects until the fall/winter because they cannot... because they cannot clear any of the trees that need to be cleared due to some environmental...
An endangered species of bats is my understanding that came up during the study.
There you go. I wasn't, I wasn't going to say that, but, yes, endangered species of bats apparently don't live there in the fall and winter.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I want to address some of the false narratives Chadri Kokar has posted on social media for taking credit for initiating and completing under a short tenure projects such as Camera Park and our roadways. This is absolutely false. These initiatives were planned and approved by the previous administration under then village president Linda Jackson and five of the six trustees sitting here before you. Ms. Linda Jackson and the trustees deserve the proper recognition in getting the funding, having the vision, and making Glendale Heights a better place to live for future generations. And speaking of recognition, I want to thank village trustee Mohammed Siddiqui for lobbying the village board and getting flock cameras for Glendale Heights. You may or may not be aware, these flock camera systems provide our police department another valuable tool to combat crime in real time. License plate reader cameras can be placed anywhere to capture detailed data about license plates and vehicles used to commit crimes so action can be taken quickly and efficiently. Lastly, I want to thank the village board for their dedication representing the residents of Glendale Heights. These last two years have been most trying, but you continue to listen to the residents in your district and have done what is best for the community, not for yourself. Unlike the current village president that starts a conversation with "I," the board starts theirs with "we." Credit is due for not folding into dictator-style tactics. Pat Meritado, Michael Light, and Bill Schmidt are up for reelection coming April fourth of 2023. I applaud you for running again in hopes of representing the residents in your given district for another four years. In a public forum for all to hear, as a business owner, as a resident, and a candidate for village president, you have my full support and my endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anaveros. Anyone else? No one? Okay, we'll move on. Committee recommendations? There is none. Discussion regarding job order contract J O C update on athletic fields. Darcy?
I'm Darcy Garzai. I'm the purchasing agent for the village of Glendale Heights. We had a discussion a couple of meetings ago about the F H Passion turf field project and I just wanted to give some explanation on job order contracting and the bid process. What is job order contracting or a general government services contract? Job order contracting, or referred to as JOC, is a way of getting small, simple, commonly encountered construction projects done easily and quickly. The JOC method of project delivery was devised by the military sector in the eighties as a way to overcome problems with traditional design-build method. Using design-bid-build, every project, no matter how small, had to be designed, put out to bid, with the award going to the lowest bidder. Going through this procedure for every job was becoming impractical. The common occurrences of construction delays, cost overruns, and quality disputes were equally reduced using the new method, and JOC has been equally successful in the private sector. It has reduced delays, cost overruns, and quality disputes. Recently, legislation has authorized the use of JOC for public construction in many states, Illinois being one of them. Essentially, a job order contract provides owners with an on-call general contractor who is familiar with the site and the owner's needs. Show me the savings. Time is money. When every project has to be bid with a design-bid-build, the JOC contract projects are completed faster, they cost less, and there's no compromise to quality. There are several other important advantages provided by the job order contracting. Products done under JOC contracts are completed faster, cost less, and the quality of work is equal to or higher than projects done using design-bid-build. The most obvious benefit of a job order contracting is that it's necessary, it's not necessary to write separate bid documents and contracts for each job. Since procurement and procedures are major contributors to overhead and require significant staff resources, bypassing this procedure saves time and money. Jobs get done faster and more effectively because of procurement costs are spread over Another advantage of job order contracting is that unit pricing had already been bid as is already in place. There are no price negotiations involved in implementing a JOC contract. Each unit price is already developed through the bid process and it's, it's, it's a fixed price. It's a very important feature of the JOC process is that the contractor is chosen using a qualification-based selection. This means that the choice will be based on experience with similar sites, knowledge, and capability of personnel and other factors that directly impact the quality of work And the JOC contract that we're using for this is one that was done by Elmwood Park. Basically, what they did was they went out for a bid and they developed a price book and those prices were established, unit prices. For example, you might see a price for a square foot of concrete or a ton of CA seven rock or CA six rock. And basically what they do is they take those unit prices and they build the project. I have, I have a bid that I would be happy to send to the board that was done by Elmwood Park. It's a hundred and fifty-one pages, so I did want to be fiscally and environmentally responsible and not make copies and have them all over, but I would be happy to send you a copy of the Elmwood Park bid. Again, if you saw how arduous the process was, that F H Passion had to go through, they had to submit unit prices for various types of jobs, they had to show their certifications, they had to show their qualifications. And I think one of the most important parts of this is that the quantities in this are for a six, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here. A six-county area, so, so anybody in the state of Illinois in the six-county area can joint piggyback off of this contract. And the most important thing again is that it has already been through attorney review. With the popularity of JOC contracts and piggybacking, there were a few bids and contracts to choose from. So we further reviewed, when we talked about using this JOC contract, we also compared it to other JOC contracts. The Elmwood Park bid had a two percent administration fee and that was based on project size. NCPA, which is another popular cooperative, had a three percent administration fee. And Sourcewell, which I believe you might all be familiar with, another joint purchasing, had increased their fees from seven and a half to eight and a quarter percent. So not only was this project, these, this JOC contract bid, but we additionally took it against other JOC contracts and compared the administrative costs. So just to give you numbers, the estimated project budget is one million two-five. The administration costs using the JOC contract would be twenty-five thousand. If we went with NCPA, which has a similar pricing, their administration fee is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and Sourcewell would be over a hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I just wondered if there were any questions that I could answer for you?
So Passion is going to be the general contractor?
Uh huh.
And then he hires all his subcontractors?
Correct.
Okay, is there any questions? Bill?
Are there any other contractors that would be suitable for this type of work?
You mean as the general contractor or, I mean...
Yes.
I, I suppose there, there might be other people that could do that, but we'd have to look into a different...
We've reached out to other communities and what they've used and they've all just used Passion because there really hasn't been anybody else that does this in a format that we're aware of.
So in other words, he's, he's a general contractor, he's not getting all the qualified subcontractors that do this work?
Correct. And he would run the job?
And he runs the job.
Correct.
So we pay, we pay, we pay one person, then he pays, he pays everybody else?
Exactly.
So it seems like there is no competition, like, you know, we are just giving it to one. Is there any other company which is like, what you call that company?
You, you said that there is no competition, but I, I guess I was trying to explain, is the job order contract itself? Passion went through a process to be awarded this JOC contract. So there is a bid that was done that determines that they were the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for this particular contract.
So that bid is already went and...
Elmwood Park did that bid. It was reviewed by our attorneys to make sure that it was professional and in line and I believe Don Starino even sent a letter kind of authorizing or saying that he was familiar with the JOC contract. Some of you had made inquiries regarding the above talk, topic. JOC is an alternative to municipal contracts such as Sourcewell, which provides the ability to contract for products and services. So just so you know, Don, Don is familiar and aware and supports this contract.
So how about some other general contractors? If we can get some estimate from them and then we can compare apple to apple and...
If you went out for the, we could do that. We could go out for the bid process, but I'll be honest with you, if you went out for the bid process, you would not be able to have these fields done in time to rent them out this year.
Darcy, I think you maybe need to explain that the general contract fee or whatever they're doing is all factored in?
Everything is, there's no, normally when you do a project, you'd have to go out and you'd have to hire an engineering firm to be able to design the project. And then you would, once the project was designed, you'd have the specifications, you would go out to bid that project. This kind of combines all that. It's already been bid. They basically took a price book of all these different construction-type projects and he went out to bid. If you'd like, I can send you a copy of the bid so you can see. It's a hundred and fifty-one pages. I would have had it here.
No, that's not, so it's basically we send that out for bid and they bid and they won our bid or is it Elmwood Park?
Elmwood Park went out to bid with large quantities, larger quantities than Glendale Heights for their construction price.
Okay, so Elmwood Park, okay, they did it. And where we fit in in this process?
We would be piggybacking off of that bid. Joint purchasing, it's called.
Okay.
That they established a contract and it was based on very large quantities, so there was like a quantity discount. So we're piggybacking off of their contract.
So basically they bought a bulk and we are just saying, okay, since you bought this, maybe we have this kind, share and to this amount. That's what you...
They, they bid like a million dollars worth of, worth of, worth of work and, and the pricing that they were given for that, because again, you'll get a volume discount for the prices, we're piggybacking off of that.
Okay, so, and, and what are the cons if we, let's say we go to a, forget about the Elmwood Park, we go to the general contractor, hey, we want this, this, this to be done. It's, I think it's the time, you already said that it's, it's not, other than time, what are the other things?
Well, there's, again, you would have to have, you'd have to establish a contract for an engineer, so there would be money that you'd have to put out, you'd have to wait for the time for the design to be done. Again, more time, time is money. Once you got to that, you'd have to go through the bid process. There is a cost for the bid process, time again, you have to advertise, that type of thing.
Darcy, to put the bid out, how many hours would it take you to do that?
A JOC? Oh, I, it would take probably...
Not the JOC, just the, we're bidding out the parks.
Oh, probably, like I said, if, if we would be lucky for, to be out in, again, if we had to have somebody design and engineer it, it could be a couple of, few months.
No, how many hours does it take you to do a bid for each, for each one of these, for the baseball field and the soccer field? How long would it take you to put the RFP together to put it out the bid?
Oh, probably take a couple of weeks to get everything together.
So I, I'm, the way I'm thinking is that if we went out separately, it would cost us a lot more money than doing business with this guy, with, with, with one general contractor and he hires all his subcontractors.
Correct.
Because if we had, if we had to go out and pay an engineer, I don't know ratio, that's, that's a lot of money, right? Paying engineer to scope all this out and...
Depends how big the scope of the project, it depends how big the scope of the project is, yeah.
Yes, I, I think it's probably, this is the wisest thing to do, but...
Well, just to give you, just to give you an idea of, we've, we've been working with them, we don't have a contract with them. They've invested quite a bit of time and, and effort already into just showing us the different options that we have. When we talked about doing the baseball and the fields, they showed us all the fencing, the lighting, they were able to do this scenario, that scenario. I mean, you'd have to have a pretty large bid process to be able to get all of those options and have all of that engineering done.
So Doug, what, what are you, what are you looking for?
So we're looking for the board to give us the approval to move forward, to enter, to bring back a contract that the board can look at, review, and approve for the JOC contract so we can get started on the athletic fields. And just so everybody knows, we've cut, we've cut the, the authorization that the board gave us at one point two-five, we've cut that back about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So our, we're at about one point one because we're changing some things up for cost purposes. We know that we need to do some other different things and we're not turfing the, the baseball fields, we're making those, reconstructing those with grass infields and dirt infield as they are today, but reconstructing those with drainage so they drain, reconstructing those level, putting in clay versus the topsoil and rock that's there now. So the, the bulk of this money is for the soccer field at Camera.
Okay. Chester, you have anything? Mike?
No, I'm good.
Chester? So I say let's, let's move it. Does anybody want, does anybody want the contract from Elmwood Park?
Pat?
Yeah. Chester?
Did you, did, anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chester?
Darcy, Darcy, you did a great presentation. I got a much, much better understanding of this project because of your work.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you and congratulate you again. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Chester. Does anybody want the contract for Elmwood Park bid?
No.
I don't think we need it, but does anybody want it?
Nope. Mary?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so I, I say let's move it, let's get it going. Bill?
Do you need a motion or...
No, it's just for discussion, it's just for discussion. So I just want, I just wanted the guidance from the board so that we can work with Passion in the next two weeks to bring you a contract back that, that you can review and approve or deny, your, whatever you want to do. But we want to at least get better understanding for the board of what the process was and then bring back a contract.
I say go for it.
Mike? Go for it, Mike?
Go for it.
Thank you.
Chester?
Yeah, Doug, what would the final price be? Do you have any idea?
We're looking at about one point one-ish.
Okay.
You know, give or take. But we've, we've cut out significantly things that we think we, we can do differently cheaper and we're working to make our soccer field, you know, we've cut forty thousand dollars out of soccer field recently, we've cut the turf out of the baseball field to make it a dirt, the field, one field now is dirt, we're going to scrape that, replace it, put drainage in and make it clay. And the baseball field that's a grass infield is going to get scraped, drained, drainage, new, new baseball field turfis, clay mix, and new sod and grass. So...
Sounds good to me. The only thing I worry about is being hit with a lot of change orders.
No, this, this should, this should eliminate all of change orders.
Oh, okay, you can put that in writing?
They, they, yes, for the most part.
Well, that makes me happy.
Thank you, Doug.
The change orders, we go back to the general contractor, right? If there is any.
If there is any, yes, it won't come, it won't come to the board.
It won't come to us, it'll go to him.
The only way, the only thing that they said, the only change orders that would be is if we changed the scope of the work.
Right.
Otherwise, there's...
Everything goes to them, change orders, Mary?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay, I guess go for it, Doug.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Warner, it is earned.
I'm sorry, I just had a question, just for, I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Flynn? In the last meetings, we talked about extra monies for the artificial turf was the idea. So, if I'm hearing correctly, we're eliminating the artificial turf and allowing using natural sod?
So, it came in way over budget, the turf. So, the money that we budgeted at 1.25, the project came in at about 1.5. So, I wasn't going to come back to the board and ask for more, ask for more money. So, the turf project at the soccer field is moving forward for the soccer field. The Nazos Park Athletic Field, baseball fields, are going to be high school-level baseball fields.
I mean, I'm all for saving money on behalf of the taxpayer, but looking at the long term with artificial turf, I thought the idea was with less maintenance, we'd have more endurance out of that if we spent that money for a 10-year program, so it would be a payback.
I concur, and I'm a baseball guy, right, so I'm all about making the turf fields. However, it came in significantly over budget, and the, we're preparing the fields for everything that needs for turf to go into. The fields are being prepared for it, we're putting a clay mix in with sod. Four or five years from now, if we have the money to put turf in, then all we got to do is go down to the base and put the turf on.
Okay, thank you.
Darcy, I want to thank you for your presentation, it was very, how many square feet are we looking at that we cut out with the baseball portion and leaving a turf versus, you know, having everything baseball in the soccer field, you know how much square footage?
Of baseball?
Yes.
Whatever the circumference of a 90-foot baseball field is, and then a 70-foot softball field?
Okay, and how much square footage are we utilizing for the soccer?
The soccer, whatever the dimension of a soccer field is.
I didn't bring the dimensions.
I mean, it's 110 yards by 50 or 60 yards, something like that.
And I'm just, you know, the thing is, it was brought up, the maintenance of the, now if we had completely turf, then we wouldn't have the maintenance, and I know how terrible when I was coaching and managing baseball, dealing with baseball fields. I don't think there's going to be the same issue that you would have on soccer fields, because they're generally grass. So, I don't know if this was the best idea to utilize the turf on a soccer versus the turf on a baseball field or softball field. So, from that standpoint...
So, the, just to answer your question, the turf, the soccer field at Camera Park is, well, first of all, soccer is the largest sport in Glendale Heights, not a close second for kids. The kids are playing on a soccer field that, if you saw the pictures that we brought here, is worn, it's, it's uneven, it barely holds grass, right? It's a mud pit when it rains, so they're not playing on a very positive surface. We only have really three soccer fields that we rotate that our kids play on. It is the largest program in Glendale Heights and growing. And the kids need a place to play that isn't going to be ruined, that they can play on day in and day out. It also gives us the opportunity to rent the field to all the high schools and clubs that are looking for athletic facilities to play at. We have a men's, a semi-pro men's league that is looking to rent it and be a permanent home there, if it's built. So, there are a lot of positives for the village when it comes to putting the soccer field in from a rental standpoint, from a usage standpoint, and from a, a draw to the community if we have a league playing there, an adult league, and a semi-pro team that's playing in a really highly competitive men's adult soccer league. So, there's a lot of benefits to us at Camera to have a premier facility there, to go along with everything else that's going on at Camera. The kids, the soccer players, you know, because we're limited in our field space, our fields are, we can't, we don't have any opportunity to rest them. And they get tore up, and they're just not a visually positive atmosphere to play in.
Okay, well, I just, you know, with the Reskin Park, the way it was, where we dropped a million dollars on that field...
And that field's fantastic.
It wasn't back then.
But it is now.
Okay, but it wasn't when it was first built, because it wasn't said drain properly.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, but when, when the upgrades came, right, it's, it's a really good place to play. And we do the same thing at Nazos, that it was similar to Reskin with the drainage and everything else, it'll be a really good place to play.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
If, if the, if the budget supported us spending an extra $250,000, and we were at 1.5, I'd be all in.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right, so that's what I wanted to bring up with regards to these expenditures, thank you.
Hey, Doug, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Doug, nothing was brought up on concession stands, is that part of this project? Or is that something different that the village has to worry about that?
It's not a part of the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No more comments? Okay, all right, we move on to other. Shows a statement made, I guess a lady called me, lives on the golf course side. She was telling me about the road program we have going in 2023. She wanted to know when we were starting, what are we doing with it? I mean, she wrote something in, I guess, one of those Facebooks, whatever you call it.
It's still in design phase, and it's gone to IDOT for approval. It hasn't come back yet, as soon as it's approved by IDOT, we'll send it out to bid. So, in the next three or four weeks, we should be going out to bid with it.
Okay, and she was giving some, I'm not saying misinformation, but not the right information. So, we started that program in 2016 for a 10-year plan at the golf course.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, Pat.
Go on, let me see, I'm reading. Maybe I'm wrong, let me see. We sent that out, that was, that was in a 10-year road program.
What was?
That golf, golf view area by the golf course.
The golf view area was not in our 10-year road program. It was not included in the one we did in 2016. The roads at that time were in reasonable shape, and they didn't...
Right, but we did have, we did send a survey route there to check those roads.
Yes, we did.
And everything was in good shape?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I just, I just want to make that clear, because she was telling me that this administration is doing all the, is doing all the work and planning, and that's not true, that's a lie.
The roads on Golf View have been surveyed in 2011, and they were surveyed in 2016. And they were in reasonable shape, where they did not need any work doing to them.
Okay, because I have a meeting with her Saturday, and I'm going to take everything with me to show her, because I guess she wrote something that, I don't know, that...
Is that the report I prepared? Is that the report I prepared for Doug?
Yes, this is the report. So, I just want to make it clear that we started this program in 2016.
2011, we first started surveying the roads, yeah.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I actually ran into the engineers that the village has with regards...
There's no comment right now, Peter, we're done with the conversation.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, the public comment is over, I know it was allowed, but this is not public comment time, we're not, we're commenting on every item that comes up.
Well, the thing is, just to let you know, Pat, it was my bringing it out there, not yours.
I don't care who, I don't care who it was, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. I have no problem with that. You're entitled to say whatever you want, you're a resident, in fact, you're my resident, yeah. Okay, let's move on to...
I think number one was a statement, Bill said, is that...
Okay, that statement, okay, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
A friend forwarded me a Facebook, Facebook post quoting zoominfo.com stating that I claim that I own the village of Glendale Heights. Further examination of the original post on zoominfo.com show that William Schmidt is also the mayor of Hampshire. Unfortunately, the William Schmidt, mayor of Hampshire, died in 2007, and I believe I am still alive. Moreover, it lists employers that I haven't even heard of, let alone been employed by. And this shows the misinformation which bounds on the internet and gives an indication of the motives of people who propagate this fake information. Secondly, at one time, we used to welcome new residents into the village with a form of welcome booklet. And I'd like to explore some form of maybe online booklet or online information, something we can give to new residents, people who are moving into the village, that give maybe basic ordinances, where to go for information, fact that you have to have garbage pick, contract for garbage pickup, things like that, that residents may not know.
I think trustee Schmidt, I think David has a comment on your comment.
Sorry, trustee Schmidt. We actually did revamp, so we used to do the big packet, and that packet became very cumbersome to have to literally every couple of weeks refill with information, as it became outdated because of newsletters, calendars, that kind of stuff. So, what we did is, this last year, we revamped that packet to a single sheet. It actually does give a pretty good breakdown of utilities that need to be set up, a reminder to check with the secretary of state to get your license updated, and just a general welcome, including our elected officials, of how we're separated by district trustees, along with the mayor and the village clerk, to give a full breakdown of everything we have, while still then indicating all of this information is on the website, there's a whole section for new residents on the website, with a full breakdown of everything. And I think, and maybe Rachel can speak on it, as we move forward with our GIS, that'll have an even further breakdown for garbage and refuse pickup, elected officials with district, and that kind of information. So, a lot of it's in process, but we did revamp that, that packet to a single sheet.
How are the new residents given this single sheet?
So, they've been distributed to both the finance counter and the comdev counters. That's kind of the first stop for new residents when they come in, because of, just wanting to check with the village of what do I do when I move in. We can certainly give our electeds a pretty hefty stack, if you guys want, with these welcome packets as well. And they're also, I think, available in administration, I think I even left some at the senior center and I think at the sports sub as well.
Okay, I'd appreciate some, because I have a couple of new people moving in my area, and...
Sure.
They don't know about this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, can you move closer to that speaker, what did you say, I didn't, I didn't copy, I didn't...
Okay.
Don't be merry-hurting either, right?
No, I heard him.
Oh, must be my hearing.
I asked David to get me a couple of copies of these sheets, so that I could distribute them to people who are moving into my area that didn't know about it.
I'll leave a hefty stack of the welcome packets or sheets for all the electeds, I'll leave them on your desks.
Oh, good, thank you. And the other thing with the weather that we had today, do we have a mechanism for advertising on our media? Either the TV channel or Facebook page, your official Glendale Heights page? Parking restrictions that are going into effect at any particular time? So, if somebody has their vehicle parked on the street, they know that, well, it's time to move it?
We can do that, we can work with Rachel, and Rachel, they usually tell us when it's an inch or two inch, and then we can tell David, and David can post it on social media, we can do that, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, yeah, because I think that'd be a benefit, don't want to surprise somebody with a ticket when, you know, we've decided it's two inches of snow, and all of a sudden, he's got to move their vehicle, so...
Yep, that's an easy fix, we can do that.
Okay, good, thank you, that's all I have.
No, you had something.
No, I already did, I went, excuse me, I went first. Okay, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, second by the mayor? Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Koker?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.